The Board of Education stands ready to provide what is needed to ensure supports are in place for as long as necessary. Our children should feel safe in their schools and in their community. The unfortunate reality is that an individual took that away from some of our families. But we stand with them in looking for answers and demanding justice. We are all trailblazers. Thank you Kirkwood for doing what you do best and joining as a, I'm sorry, do best and joining as a supportive community. Thank you. All right. Moving on to matter four point zero one, our public comment session. Our first public comment is Mr. Paul Bauer. Bauer, thank you. Mr. Bauer, you'll have three minutes to speak and Ms. Heinrich will be keeping time. Button, I'm sorry, if you press that red button, ta-da.
Okay.
There we go.
Is that working? Okay. My name is Paul Bauer and first I want to say I'm not here representing any group or any organization. I'm just a resident of the district. My family and I have lived in Kirkwood since nineteen eighty-eight. All three of our grown children attended Kirkwood Public Schools and two of them started at K E C C. Two of them graduated from the high school and the third one graduated from Salisbury School after attending here at Robinson. So the district collaborated with Special School District for that whole time. I'm here tonight to, to praise the district, to say positive things and to make a few requests also. Our children's teachers and their principals made a lot of decisions for their benefit. So my first request is that you continue to make decisions that are in the best interest of students and not in response to loud critics. We moved to Kirkwood because of the excellent schools and our children all received an excellent education from the district. I think many residents don't appreciate just how good the district is and not enough of them come to the defense of the district when others attack it. Our children's teachers employed many best practices with them. So my second request is that the district continue to do that, to give students a well-rounded education in which they not only learn knowledge but also learn to think critically and independently. My final request is that you not give in to those people who want to limit the freedoms of others for the sake of their own freedom and who want to ban books, ban teaching about equity and equality and diversity and otherwise tell teachers what and how to teach. The district's teachers and administrators are very skilled, they're dedicated professionals and the public should trust them to do their jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bauer. Next up, Ms. Mary Fitzgerald.
Hi, I'm a parent of a high school student and a twenty twenty graduate of Kirkwood School District. I'm here to talk about bullying again, talked to you in May and a couple of years ago and a couple of years before that. There's a policy that you're reviewing tonight for first draft. So I have some questions for you. Where are the Kirkwood resources to help students and families and staff? A reporting decision tree, Kirkwood billing harassment forms, mental health supports? What happens when a student complaints are ignored by staff and how do they know to go to, who to go to for help? You have an anti-bullying coordinator. Do any of you know who that is? Desi is clear about this role. I challenge you to go to the Kirkwood website. Pretend you're a parent or a student or a peer trying to report bullying and see what resources there are for us. There's nothing to help us recognize and report harassment or bullying at all. Kirkwood has a bullying reporting form. It's not currently readily available to students or parents. It was not available to my son in middle school three, four, or five times that he was bullied. Desi lists the courage to report resource for reporting bullying. This should be on the Kirkwood website. When our kids are in crisis, we are too. We are scared, exhausted, overwhelmed, and isolated. We need a clear compassionate district page with all the resources to navigate the crisis and get help. This is part of your district policy. This has been the law since twenty seventeen. You're supposed to have the procedure for reporting bullying clearly in your handbooks and also communicated to students. When administrators fail to investigate bullying, students don't get mental health resources and are at increased risk of suicide. Fifty Kirkwood students in two years have been assessed for suicidal thoughts. How many of these related to harassment and bullying? Are you collecting that data? And if you're not collecting the data, you're not looking at the problem, managing the problem, or working on it. You're supposed to have information in the handbook about the harmful effects of bullying. Resources for parents, middle of the night, a student tells their parent something's going on. Those parents need something in the middle of the night. They need to know who to go to. The mission of the Kirkwood Equity Task Force is to equip students with the skills, knowledge, and understanding to be empathetic, successful, and to value all people. How is Kirkwood School District doing this? They could do the Upstanders Bullying Program, teach students how to stand up for each other. I've been working with Dr. Macklin of Special School District to develop anti-bullying programming and resources for S S D families. Our kids, S S D served students, are specifically most vulnerable to bullying and harassment and are a lot higher risk of suicide. Other districts have the courage to report front and center on their website.
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you, Ms. Fitzgerald. I need a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda items five point zero two through five point two three as presented. Uh-huh, why is it over there? Thank you. All right, four point oh two, I need a motion in a second to approve the agenda for the October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting as presented.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Now, I need a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda items five point zero two through five point two three as presented.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Moving on to new business, I need a motion in a second to accept the district audit report for twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three as presented.
So move.
Second.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Is it okay? Good evening. I'd like to introduce Christina Jackwin. She's with Scholwalter and Jabori and she's gonna give a brief presentation to take questions, but before that, I'd like to thank her and her team. And I also like to thank Scott Harmon and our finance team for our successful audits. We do seek advice and guidance from our auditors throughout the year and they keep us up to date on any new accounting pronouncements and also compliance requirements. So we're very appreciative of their work and I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Jackwin.
Button push, there we go.
Can you hear me now? Good evening. My name is Christina Jackwin. I am the senior manager at Scholwalter and Jabori for the Kirkwood School District Audit. Tonight, I'm here to discuss a summary of the twenty twenty-three audit and a brief discussion of the financials as well as talk about the required communications that we have with the Board of Education. We performed an audit of the district's financial statements for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Our responsibility is to plan and perform our audit to be able to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are materially correct. On page one of the financial statements, you will find our independent auditor's report. In that report, we give our opinion on the financial statements. And it is our opinion that the district's financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects on the modified cash basis of accounting. With regard to the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three financial highlights, the district ended the year with total governmental fund balance of approximately eighty million dollars. This is a decrease of approximately thirty-one million dollars from the prior year. In the operating funds, the total fund balance was approximately forty-nine million dollars. And of that amount, approximately thirty-six million is unassigned or unreserved. This represents approximately forty-one percent of current year expenditures in those two funds. Remaining fund balances are restricted, committed, or assigned for other purposes. We would like to reiterate that these results are on the cash basis of accounting and that the financial condition of the district could be significantly different if the full accrual basis was used. With regard to federal reporting, the district continued to have expenditures of federal COVID-nineteen stimulus funding during twenty twenty-three. In twenty twenty-three, the total education stabilization fund expenditures, which is mostly S R three, were five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Since this is below the required threshold to be audited as a major federal program, the major program for twenty twenty-three was the child nutrition program. In addition to federal compliance requirements, Desi requires us to perform certain procedures over certain state reporting items such as attendance and transportation. We noted no instances of internal control deficiencies or non-compliance that we are required to report with regard to our testing of federal and state programs. We are required to communicate certain items to the Board of Education at the conclusion of our audit. These items are detailed in the report to the Board of Education that we have issued. This communication indicates that management is responsible for the selection and use of appropriate accounting policies, which can be found in note one to the financial statements, that we did not encounter any significant difficulties in dealing with management during our audit, there are no uncorrected audit misstatements, there were no disagreements with management. Management has provided us with representations in relation to the audit and we are not aware of any consultations with other accountants. Additionally, during twenty twenty-three, the district was required to implement the provisions of Gatsby Statement Number ninety-six with regards to subscription-based information technology arrangements, but this did not have a significant impact on the district's report due to the modified cash basis. I would like to thank Mr. Romey and the entire finance department staff for the many courtesies extended to us during our audit. And at this time, I am more than happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. Sure, go ahead.
So before the board takes questions, thank you, Ms. Shern. I do want to make sure and again say thank you, Ms. Jackwin, to you and your team. And then every opportunity that I have, one of the things that we talk about is just how important it is for our community to trust that the resources that they give us are being used in an efficient and effective manner. And the results of this audit and is, and subsequent audits or audits that have come before this have shown that. And so I do want to take this opportunity to say thank you to Mr. Romey. Thank you for the trust that you've engendered, not only in me but in this Board of Education and our community. We do not take it for granted and it's something that can be lost very quickly. And the, the trust and the competence we have in you and your department, I, I don't want to speak for the board, I'll let Ms. Shern do that. But I can say as the superintendent, it is, it is a wonderful asset and a really a value added to our district. So thank you to you and your team, Ms. Jackwin. Thank you for you and your team as well. Ms. Shern?
Sure. Thank you. I'll open up the floor for questions of the board, starting with Ms. Bernardi. Mr. Kathy, Mr. Andrews, Mr. Boyko? No, no, no. No. All right. Thank you so much. I echo Dr. Ulrich's statements. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Oh yeah, we need to approve. All those in favor of approving or to accept the district audit report for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three as presented, raise your right hand and say aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. All right. I need a motion in a second to approve the financial reports for September twenty twenty-three as presented.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Romey.
Thank you. Our revenues in September were two point seven million dollars. They mainly consist of Prop C revenues, earnings from investments, and state revenue. In September, we spent six point nine million and most of this was for salaries and benefits. In our maintenance fund, we paid the third of five lease payments. On the two thousand twenty boiler project, and those payments totaled three hundred and fifty-one thousand nine hundred dollars. In our construction fund, we paid one point two million for Prop R-related construction projects.
Any questions? I'll start down with Ms. Phil. No. Any questions to my right? Go ahead.
I just have a quick question, Mr. Romey. Also in our consent agenda, we had some budget amendments and it included some grants that we had received and that was very favorable. I didn't know if you just wanted to mention that as well.
Sure. We received a few grants, mainly K E C C grants, a childcare retention grant fund and then also a paycheck protection grant. Both those are for the Kirkwood Early Childhood Center Fund. It's the, I believe the third of each of those, but they have to be used for K E C C. One, the paycheck protection is really to help out childcare facilities that incurred losses due to COVID. And then the retention fund is, is just to help retain childcare workers. So those are two large grants that we received.
Thank you for that and your work on. Thank you for that and your work on that, for seeking that out and getting it. All right. So all those in favor of approving the financial reports for September twenty-three, raise your right hand and say aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Six point zero three, period thirteen, um, financial statements, I need a motion in a second to approve these statements, um, as presented.
So move. Second.
The floor is still yours.
So we use period thirteen, uh, for any, um, deposits that come in on the last day of the fiscal year or any adjustments, because we must close out our fiscal year on June thirtieth so that we can roll into the new fiscal year. So that's what period thirteen is for. Um, we, uh, we also wait until this time to present it to the board. Um, because of the audit is ongoing at the same time, so we want to make sure that the audit is complete. And so these financial statements have been audited. Um, there were no adjustments made to any of the statements from the auditors. Uh, and really, the only two adjustments we had are pretty minor. We decreased the operating expenditure budget by three hundred and fifty-one dollars for a charge that should have been charged to the Kirkwood Early Childhood Center. Um, so on that fund, it was an increase. Um, there were some other, um, uh, adjustments or transfers that were made within individual lines, but overall, they did not change the, the bottom line for our operating fund. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I need, um, all those in favor of approving the period thirteen financial statements? Please, well, first, do you anybody have any questions? No, it's been a long day. All right, now. Uh, all those, um. Yeah, we've got that. All those, um, in favor of approving period thirteen financial statements, raise your right hand and say aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to seven point zero one, our coffering enrollment report. Pull it closer to you.
That song? There we go. Madam Board President, Dr. Ulrich and directors, it's a pleasure to see you again. Um, I wish that we could, uh, meet more often, but, uh, once a year, I guess, is, is, is still good. Um, I'm here to present a, the annual enrollment projection study update based on twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-two birth data that's been added to your projection model. And in doing so, I'd like to just simply go over the study elements that go into, uh, the updates, the data and methods, and I'm not going to deal, uh, I'm not going to dwell, uh, a lot on this. Um, I'm just going to skip over a lot of that and get right to the findings. And, um, and go on to, um, a project that we had over the summer, which was looking at the age composition of the district and comparing that to the student enrollments, uh, for, um, for twenty twenty and also, um, later years. And I appreciate Dr. Butler being here. Uh, you know, if I, if I can't answer a question, I'm sure he can, so anyway. The study elements are the same that, uh, that go into the reports. This is, if you can believe it or not, this is the ninth in a series of enrollment study updates. Uh, it began back in the day when I think Dr. Williams was the superintendent, we were discussing a swimming pool. Uh, we were also discussing retirements and gentrification in the city, in, in the city center. And we've, we've been along, we've come a long way. Uh, so anyway, as the ninth, uh, in a series, it uses the same methodology, it uses the same series of data. And, um, again, what we've found in, in doing these each year with the same data series is a consistent uh, series of data and projections, uh, that have taken us now into the twenty twenty-eight, twenty-nine school year. I believe you all have this report, right? Okay, so you've all seen it. So what I ought to do is just skip to the end and ask if there are any questions. Well, anyway, let me, let me get through it real quick, uh, data and methods, uh, yeah.
For, for the board, if you would get into the board report, the actual presentation is attached to the end of the report itself. So these slides that you are seeing re- are reported to you, if you just go all the way to the end of what's on board docs, uh, you will see it, uh, later on in that presentation.
Okay, great. So again, uh, basically, there are two data inputs into this projection model. One is births, uh, adjusted for kindergarten cohort years. And, uh, these are obtained from the state, these are geocoded to your district boundaries and also to your attendance areas. And again, only births that occur in the district are used to project out or to finalize twenty twenty-seven kindergarten enrollments and to project preliminary twenty twenty-eight kindergarten enrollments. To match that up, what I do is I geocode your student records, which, as you can see, uh, from this map, include not only the district's boundaries are inside of Kirkwood, but also in the city of St. Louis and the balance of St. Louis County. For the purposes of projecting, I only use district resident counts, uh, by grade and also by attendance area. And after counting those, uh, births and students, we add this to a projection model. We update cohort survival ratios, which, uh, I believe I owe somebody, uh, I need to provide that data, I think, to Dr. Ulrich's. And, and that's coming. Just forgot all about it. Um, and then we generate K twelve enrollment projections for each attendance area, and then I roll up, uh, enrollment and projection totals for the middle school and also the high school. So for each attendance area, we do have K twelve resident enrollments from kindergarten through twelfth grade. Uh, this year, it's been a little bit of a difference. Uh, for the past, uh, for the first, um, I would say, four years in the series that I'm looking at from twenty sixteen through twenty nineteen, the district was experiencing positive growth. During the COVID impact year of twenty twenty, you can see that little dip in the trend line. And, uh, the district rebounded nicely in twenty, I believe, twenty twenty-one. Twenty twenty-three, uh, district enrollments continued to grow slowly, and then all of a sudden, uh, we had a negative, uh, or we had a decrease in the number of students, about a one percent decrease, which, again, has affected the, uh, district's trend line. And this is kind of, uh, this is indicative also of what's happening on the birth front. If you take the series of births and adjust those for cohort, uh, kindergarten cohort years, you see that over the past five years or so, the births in the district have been declining. Uh, they declined to the extent that in, uh, for the preliminary numbers in twenty seventeen, uh, Mr. Romey and I had asked the state for a redo on the birth data extract. I was having concerns about the numbers coming in. Uh, they did another extract for us. We did the geo-coding twice, and we found the same results. So feel pretty confident that, uh, in twenty twenty-seven, uh, we're going to bottom out at around four hundred births for kindergarten cohort. And, uh, in twenty twenty-eight, it looks like, uh, that number is going to be close to the twenty twenty-seven number, but maybe a little bit, uh, a little bit higher. And when we line up kindergarten enrollments with, uh, with the birth series, as you can see, what we're doing is modeling kindergarten projections to the right of the red bar, and, uh, you can see how, um, how the, the lines more or less, uh, uh, trend together. Now, what we're able to do from this data is for each of the attendance areas, we're able to project out what the attendance, uh, what the proj- uh, what the enrollments are going to be. Uh, looking at Kaiser, uh, as we projected last year, uh, Kaiser enrollments hit a peak in twenty twenty-three, uh, twenty twenty-two, and they've come down in twenty twenty-three. And from that decline, we expect Kaiser enrollments to continue to decline. This is also, um, indicative of what's happening on the birth front with, uh, births sliding between twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three and, uh, also in the, uh, projection interval. Again, the yellow lines are actual births and, uh, the, uh, the orange line from the red bar to the right are projected kindergarten enrollments. In North Glendale, we've been projecting, uh, increases, but again, over the last two years, they've been steady. So this trend line has changed a little bit. Instead of, uh, projecting upward, we're projecting pretty much the same enrollments in North Glendale, uh, through twenty twenty-eight. In the Robinson attendance area, uh, as we projected last year, uh, enrollments have been going down, and they will continue to slide through twenty twenty-eight. Tillman attendance area is really interesting, uh, for whatever reason, and, um, I'm sure we all have our thoughts. The enrollment projections for Tillman are showing that either they're going to hang steady at the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four levels, or they're going to increase, uh, based on the last two-year comparison of actual enrollments by grade. You can see in the dotted line that those actual and succeeding enrollments are trending toward the higher end or higher projection series. And, uh, the average and the five-year average are somewhat, uh, somewhat lower and trending, uh, uh, close to current numbers. And as you can see in the graph below, the number of births are going up in Tillman, and that also is going to affect kindergarten classes. And then finally, Westchester, the attendance area, as we projected, is steadily increasing. However, it's going to reach a peak in twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, and then it's going to, uh, it's gonna, it's gonna level off to what are currently, uh, what are current enrollments and, uh, in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. And as you can see, the birth, uh, trend lines in the graph below show, um, you know, an up and down between, um, uh, between twenty twenty and also through the, uh, projection series, the end date of twenty twenty-eight. Nifer is kind of interesting also. Uh, we've been projecting that be- based on trends, that Nifer enrollments were going to continue to go down. Uh, however, it looks like, uh, with the strength of, uh, enrollments in Tillman, that we may see Nifer enrollments leveling off and going up a little bit. And then, of course, north, uh, we're going to ex- we're going to continue to see enrollment increases there. Kirkwood High School, uh, between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-three, you can see the decline. Um, we're expecting those to level off in twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, and then to trend upward based on the strength of middle school enrollments. And again, by attendance area, here's a summary. Um, I didn't expect district enrollments to decline between twenty-two and twenty-three, but they did, which negatively affected the enrollment projections out to twenty twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Uh, as predicted last year, Kaiser enrollments have and will continue to decline. North Glendale are going to stay steady. Robinson is going to decline. Tillman school is out, pardon the pun. Uh, it's either going to increase or it's going to stay steady. And, uh, Westchester enrollments are going to increase now until about twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, where they will level off and, uh, and, uh, at a peak of about six hundred and, six hundred students or so. And on Nifer, instead of continuing to decline, now we're expecting them to increase slowly with enrollments reaching six hundred and twenty-eight students in twenty-eight, twenty-nine. And again, north is going to continue an upward climb to seven hundred and thirty-three students in twenty twenty-eight. So it's a good thing that you put your money into north, uh, and move the administration building. So they're gonna need the, uh, they're gonna need the room. And as predicted in last year's report, Kirkwood Senior High students, uh, school enrollments declined between twenty-two and twenty-three. But again, where you expect because of the, due to the strength of middle school enrollments, those to trend upward in twenty-five and twenty-six. So what I would suggest the, the board and, and certainly my recommendation to David Ulrich and Dr. Butler and Mr. Romey is to, let's keep the student enrollment counts by attendance area current with fall. It's going to be interesting to see what happens in Tillman, because again, that's going to be a pivotal year. Uh, we need to keep our resident birth data by attendance area current. And again, refresh the enrollment projections with twenty twenty-three births and twenty twenty-four enrollment data next fall. And I hopefully, I'll, I'll see you again then. Just one thing that, uh, I've been given license to talk about is an age composition study that, uh, we did over the summer. In that case, uh, that was one of the best practices that I suggested or recommended, uh, to the board. And, um, what it does is it considers age-related data from the last decennial census and compares those to actual enrollments. And it's not to be confused with the birth to kindergarten cohorts and capture rates, okay? This is a comparison of enrollments to a comparison of actual and estimated population totals for by single year of age. Now, there's a lot of interesting results that came out of this. And that is, you can see from the percentages that looking at six years and looking at kindergarten enrollments, that roughly sixty-nine point one or two percent of the total number of kids that are in that age group, uh, attend Kirkwood schools in kindergarten. You can see how those percentages change between age groups and, uh, and grades, uh, all the way up through eighteen years of age and twelfth grade. Which again, looks a little bit high to me, but, uh, there must be a reason why, uh, households and kids decide to go to Kirkwood High School in the last year. But anyway, uh, we did this for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and we made projections off of this in twenty twenty-three. We found some anomalies in some of the atten- and we did this by attendance area, we found some anomalies that are somewhat difficult to explain. And, um, we do have anecdotal and hypothetical reasons for those differences, but basically, this is the trend line that we're looking at and the, uh, percentages of, uh, kids in those age groups that are going to Kirkwood schools. Uh, application-wise, uh, percentages may be applied and used to estimate and project enrollments for the district. By the way, this is the first time that this has been done in the district, and this is the first time that I've done it for any district. Uh, but the question is always lingered out there, well, what percentage of the population goes to public schools? And what percentage goes to our particular district? Well, what we did using block group data, which is not coincidental with district geography, and we also took some license with age-related data, because not all kids as of April the first, uh, were five years old that were eligible for, uh, to enter kindergarten in the fall. Uh, we took those into account, and we, we just simply came up with these percentages, which are general in nature. Uh, not very, very good for actual and precise projections, but they, they do provide you with an idea of the numbers of, of kids that are enrolled in school by grade and also by year. Uh, again, estimate, the limitations, and I gotta stress this, they, um, the estimate date, the projection date in the enrollment series are different. April one is not the same as September thirty, okay? And again, this is what we're comparing data from. Block g- block group geography is not the same as district attendance area geography. So what I did was I took centroid of attendance areas and picked out the block groups from those and, and summed those for each of the years and also for the, uh, census and the estimate data. And age-specific projections of the population, they should not be confused with, uh, detailed projections of class cohorts by grade. And again, I gotta throw in this, this very, very important, uh, bullet, and that is the best indicator and predictor of succeeding class sizes are previous class sizes, okay? You know, within one, two percent. And having engaged in some fun there over the summer and, and bringing this to the attention of Dr. Butler and also Mr. Romey, I'm open to questions.
So, Dr. Cawfrin, I know that later you would want to have me to do this, but it's Dr. Bailey that is sitting to your right.
I do have a Dr. Butler, by the way.
So I had to I had to consult with Ms. Andrews to my right. Did he say Dr. Butler? So it is it is Dr. Bailey. So thank you very much for your for your presentation. I do have one question, if you don't mind, Ms. Shearn, that I did when we were going over the presentation on Friday. I want to make sure that the board hears this question, as it will relate to the boundary update that we're going to give here in a few minutes and hear from Dr. Bailey, is is it is it accurate to say that even though it may seem like, I'll say in quotes, just a 1% decrease, that as we look and dig into these numbers, that the decrease is disproportionately seen at the elementary level, and even more so disproportionately seen over time at Kaiser? Is that accurate?
Yes.
Thank you.
That was easy. I feel like I'm giving a financial report. No question.
All right, I'm gonna start to my left, Ms. Moltika.
Just two quick questions, and thank you for all of this and and for explaining it so well. I know that the numbers you're using are based on birth rates in the Kirkwood School District. How do we factor in kids who aren't born here but move into the school district?
That's a real good question, and I do it, I would say closer to directly rather than indirectly. First of all, the the birth information that we use compared to actual kindergarten enrollments are from live records. They are counts. They're not rates, and and rates are based on numbers of, for example, women between the ages of 25 and 34, you know, but we don't use rates. We use actual counts. We've had the series that that extends back to 2010 through 2022. So the counts that we use are compared to actual kindergarten enrollments, okay? To come up with a cohort survival ratio, we're literally surviving the number of babies that are born in attendance areas to the number of kids that are enrolled. And when I showed those those graphs, you saw that yellow line? That yellow line in some of the attendance areas are higher than the actual numbers of kindergartners enrolled. That means that households with kids have had to have moved in to those attendance areas for those lines to be separated by that by that amount. In some cases, in other in other cases, the the numbers of kindergarten students enrolled are higher than the number of births, and that is a direct indication that families with kids have moved in, because the number of indigenous births don't explain entirely the number of kindergartners enrolled. So from those survival ratios of births to kindergartners, we we apply those to the latest numbers and and come up with a high, low, and a mid-series projection. So I got I got to fly this. It must be, you know, I I I put on I put on cologne. So so yeah, so from those from those births, from the number of births, we either have larger number of births than numbers of students enrolled. I got them. Or we've got larger number of kindergartners enrolled compared to births, meaning the householders with those kids are moving in. We do that, we factor that into the projections, and we also look at the same thing for grades K through 12 by attendance area. So our ratios are going to range between, and generally speaking, between 2%, plus or minus 2% of 1, so 0.98 to 1.02 for births, and also for the kids coming into the the school district. Kids move in, kids move out, however, some classes get bigger, some classes get smaller, and that information is coming from class sizes over the last five years. I hope that answers the question.
Thank you, it does. And then one other thing, and you might have touched on this in your answer. When at the end of your presentation, you said that the best predictor of future class sizes is current class sizes. And so I'm wondering how that gets factored in to all these projections that are showing a real decrease.
Okay. The I could show you. I don't think you'd want to see. Let me let me see if I can describe it. What we do is we line up enrollment data by classes, and the best example of that, I can go back to personal experience with my son. He started public schools in 1984, and he graduated in 2003, okay? So for 12 years or for 13 years, you know, he had a class size, okay, along with all the other kids that went to his particular grade school. From those class sizes I calculated, divided simply one by the other, the number, and came up with the number of kids surviving, okay, by grade from 1984 through 2003, okay? So we've got a we've got a column of numbers that have been divided since 2003. That was a that was a completed cohort, so we've got 12 numbers, okay? We do the same thing for the kids that graduated in 2004 and started in 1985, graduated in 2006, started in 1986, and so on. So from those, you know, we've got these, we've got these ratios. So for the last five years, what I do, and what I've found to be useful, is to take a weighted average, taking the highest three, taking the mid-three, and taking the lowest three to come up with a high, low, and a mid-projection. And then to supplement that, and I threw this line in, I had to because of COVID, I wanted to see what the succeeding ratios of of grades would produce in terms of an enrollment projection, and that's a snapshot, and that's that dotted line that you see on some of these graphs, okay? So that's that's kind of how it that's kind of how it works. We set this thing up, we look at we look at students in classes by cohort year, when they're going to graduate, when they start school. We track them through their experience in the district. We see differences, you know, in class sizes. Classes get bigger, classes get smaller. Sometimes you find, and this is of interest, sometimes you find systematic differences like the number of kids moving from kindergarten to first grade. Like, it could be a lot higher, it could be lower. Kids moving into middle school, higher or lower. Same thing with high school students, notably those that are moving between grade 10, grade 11, and grade 12, okay? So, you know, those are some, and then you'll also find in some cases bumps along the road where you have a parochial school closed down, okay? And because of that, you've got an influx of kids between grades three and five, say. Seen that in some districts as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pingborn.
I have some questions. I'm not exactly sure how to ask them yet. So, Dr. Cawfrin, it's been, I don't know when we we last had you come in, but I'm really, I guess I'm struggling a little bit with understanding the last time we got projections from you, which showed an increase to where we're at now. And I understand that we went through COVID, and the whole world changed, and education changed in so many ways, but I guess I'm really struggling with how different the projections are that we're seeing now versus the last time you came to us. And I don't know how to put that in a question as much as a comment, but I'm just, I'm really struggling with that.
Okay, let me struggle with you, okay? The projections based on 20, let me say, 21 through 22 data indicated that enrollments in the district would increase by about 1% over the next five, six years or something like that. Instead of going up, district enrollments between 2022 and 2023 went down. They went down by, I think, in my report, I want to say 80 students, okay? So factoring in that decline produces those negative or those declining trend lines that you see in my report. It could be that next year, enrollments will go up. If they do go up, if they go up past the 5,500 or so level that we're looking at right now in 2023, then that will produce a trend line that'll probably show increases, okay? So the overall, in general, the overall enrollment picture and profile of the district between 2022 and 2023 is slightly negative. I wouldn't bet my life on a continued 1% decline, but when that happens between a previous year and a benchmark year from which we're going to springboard into a projection interval, there's no way that we can suggest that it would go up, rather it's probably going to follow that same trend, and that's what's happened in the projection series.
Okay, I appreciate that. And my other comment was semi-related to Ms. Moltika's in looking at, again, in one of our reports that you gave to us, I believe it was three or four years ago, 2019, we had a large number or larger discussion about the number of houses that could be renovated or remodeled where we have families come in, and we made decisions, you know, based on some of that information, and it showed our biggest elementary area for that opportunity was Kaiser and then Robinson, and now I'm hearing the opposite. So again, do we feel something's changed there, or we didn't look at that data this time?
In 2019, we did a, what I call a geodemographic study, which predated the census, okay? And it also used tax assessment data and independently produced estimates and projections of population and housing. From that, I I do, yeah, I I do recall that the the projection profile of Kaiser was a bit different than it is now. I I also do recall that that we were looking at early on, anywhere from a 3% to a 5% growth rate in district enrollments based on changes that had happened during the latter part of the decade. Those conditions and those circumstances have changed. They changed, they've changed a lot. Although I can only give you anecdotal information, I can tell you that housing costs and land values in Kirkwood have skyrocketed. I can also tell you that the number of houses that can be torn down and rebuilt at a developer's factor of a multiplier of three, those are pretty much disappearing in the district. The number of affluent householders moving in, they acquire and they use more floor space, bigger houses, but they don't tend to have more kids. It's the smaller houses that tend to produce more children, and which would add to the Kirkwood elementary enrollments. So having said that, I can only tell you that 2020 was a was an interesting year, to say the least. That 2020 impacted kindergarten enrollments, and it's also going to impact kindergarten enrollments in '27 and '28, as you see those birth lines really go down toward the end of the projection interval. So with that, and seeing the decline since 2019 of the number of births in the district, okay, we would expect the enrollments as well to decline. So things change, and that's one of the the beauties of updating the projections, and that's take into account the latest information that's available to project out what you're going to see in 2028-29.
Okay, and then my only other comment is, and I appreciate your explanation, so thank you for that, even though I'm frustrated. I don't believe when we share these projections, the way that it was presented tonight, that we should be saying this is exactly what's going to happen, because you just acknowledge that next year you could see an increase, and it would change all of our projections. I think keeping with that these are projections, this is what we believe could happen, but not this is an absolute. And so it concerns me a little bit with the way that it was presented tonight, that it was said as an absolute, so that's my last comment.
You know, projections are just that, they're best guesses as to what we're going to see in the future. It's not something to literally hang your hat on and bet your life on. I mean, projections are going to change. Now, if, for example, you decided that, okay, we don't want to project anymore, we're just going to keep the numbers that we have until 2028-29, well, we'll see what happens. But as the district has done over the last 10 years or so, the district has maintained these these data sets and also has maintained these projections. And again, I I'm I apologize for your frustration, but again, it's it's not necessarily these numbers that are are going to absolutely return exact results, but you can expect, based on previous comparisons of data, you can expect these results to be within 1% to 2% of what they actually come in at. Plus or minus.
Mr. Boyka.
Thanks. Yeah, I guess my only point is, first of all, I do appreciate the information and your ability over the entire time I've been on the board to come in and and help us as we plan in various ways, including obviously making sure we have enough facilities for the students, and I think, you know, I appreciate how that's been able to help us make those decisions in a way that that has worked out. I did have one question. There has been some discussion, as you probably know, there's about 60 apartment units coming in downtown soon and a few other smaller projects. Are those reflected in any way in these projections or or not?
Probably not. To the extent that they're not occupied and those kids are not attending school, there is a there is another method that we used, I believe, in the 29 2019 report, and you rang a bell with me, and that is, we took a look at the types of housing that students in the Kirkwood district come from by way of attendance area, which was really kind of interesting. Based on the breakdown of types of units, types of structures that the tax assessor uses to assess property, we identified where students live. We counted those by those types of units, and then came up with, I think, some factors dealing with, you know, the number of kids that you would expect from multifamily or higher-density apartments, duplexes, condos, and that kind of thing. So that information is 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 valuable. It's it's available from the tax assessor, and it's something that we can take and overlay your resident students on fairly easily.
Okay, but to be clear, that's something that wasn't done in this iteration of the report, right?
That's correct.
And the new apartments that haven't come online yet, obviously, still aren't reflected then.
Yeah, I think there's, yeah, those are the ones that are off of Adams and Lindberg, I think, right next to the Alpine shop.
We call it North Kirkwood Road here.
North. Well, call this guy Dr. Butler, so. Thank you. Yeah, okay.
You good? All right, Ms. Andrews.
Thank you for your work on this. Can you help me understand, you said that we can't compare the age composition study to the capture rate?
Yes.
Help help me.
Because the the only the only true capture rate that we've used in describing projections are births to kindergartners. That is, that reflects a difference of about five years, okay, from when the baby is born to when they show up in kindergarten. What we did in the age composition study is we looked at actual enrollments, okay, from enrollment totals, and we compared that to actual census data of the number of kids that were counted in that age group, or at least those that were reported. So those that reported represent the population, okay, of kids. When we look at births, that represents the population of births that we would expect, okay, to see five years down the road and the percentage of those.
Okay.
So in the age composition study, it is by year and also the difference between April 1 and So, in the age composition study, it is by year and also the difference between April one and September thirty. In the case of births and capture rates, it is literally the number of babies that were born, and let me, let me throw out a date, as of the twenty-second, as of November or December, September thirty, two thousand and twenty-two, through August of two thousand and twenty-three compared to the number of kids that were enrolled in two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay.
That would be, you know, and if you want to take a look at the actual numbers, you would subtract six from two thousand and twenty-two. So we're looking at babies that were born between two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen that come into kindergarten classes in two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay, okay, perfect, thank you. And then, I guess, you know, last year, you're, we were projected to grow by one percent, and obviously this year we're projected to decline by one percent. And so I know that we, you know, the kindergarten projections didn't come in. Are there other factor, like what else led to this one percent? Do you see what I mean?
Good question, and I really don't have the answer to that. I can speculate.
Perfect.
But again, my, yeah, once again, we see ebb and flows in, in enrollments, and they do go up, they do go down. I can't, and I didn't quite believe the number of births that were provided to the district from DHSS this year. That shows a steady decline, okay, from a peak that was reached back in, let's say, six years ago, to what we actually got in terms of two thousand and twenty-two live birth records. The number of enrollments, I really don't have a, a, a really good answer.
Like you can't, okay, pinpoint where, okay.
But, but I, but again, for those reasons that I mentioned before, I, I think it's becoming harder for younger families with kids to live in the district or to move here. So, affordable housing is an issue.
Okay.
Mr. Caffey. I mean, sorry, Ms. Bernardi.
Dr. Coffrin, thank you for being here. You have been doing this ten years, longer than I've been on the school board. So we, we appreciate all of your work on this and also your current update, because as you know, this is what drives everything we do. So it is very important. It's our staffing, it's all of our resources, our policies, our boundaries. So, it's really important for us to make the best decision for our students. And you did mention the trends, and so I'm kind of going to say a few things about what you've done and then ask you for your advice for moving forward. Because as you said, the, the district births for two thousand and twenty-two were the lowest. They were three ninety-seven, and those are directly correlated, as you show us every year, to our kindergarten numbers. So we've already seen our enrollment numbers for our kindergarten decline, right in line with those. And it was eighty, as you mentioned, in the district, but seventy-four of those were K through five. So I, I know that I very much appreciated your additional study, but when we look at the trends, it's, it's really no surprise that these birth rates are going down, because for the third year in a row in Missouri, there were more deaths than births. So if we look at the decreasing numbers in children aged birth to five all throughout the state of Missouri as well, and St. Louis has its rankings, and throughout the state, we're forty-seventh with an average household size of two-point-five people, which you said, so they're bigger houses with less people. So these are the trends, and it's important that we look at the trends and just not rely on our anecdotal information. Sometimes we tend to look at our neighbors and see how many kids they have. So, I think it was very helpful that you did the age composition study as well, because you can see how many children and then how many come to Kirkwood. So that was a very good addition, as was the information you shared in two thousand and nineteen that had to do with the units. So we had been talking about what the best predictors are, and you stated it a few times, that it's births and student counts, but also when you do a predictive model, you might look at some other things. So I wanted to ask you, in addition to what you've done for us this year, which was to show us what we needed to look at for, to make our decisions. But moving forward, maybe are there some other things you could do for us as well to add to that predictive model? It's a big question.
Can I get the financial people back? I think that the, the summer study was, was interesting. That was one of those things that, that we could look at again and doing. It would be interesting to see the, to take a look, and I do this work for some of the school districts in the metropolitan area, taking a look at differences in tax records, either one year or every two years, taking a look at the differences in the numbers of housing units that come in and also the age of those structures. And again, we take and we overlay where students live on top of those houses and pull out counts, which are comparable year to year. There are also independent estimates and projections certainly of, of, by age, of numbers of kids, and that's what we used in the summer study, that might be, might be of interest. And again, these estimates and projections are done for the entire country, all forty-eight-hundred, I believe, block groups in the continental U.S. And the information that they, that they tend to produce are, it's, it's good information, but again, it's not as accurate as looking at twenty-two students moving from first grade to twenty-three students moving to second grade in the, say, the Kaiser School District. So in terms of, in terms of prediction, if you were to take succeeding grades, and I think I did this for Dr. Ulrich, and if you were to regress that out, just, just using what we typically use, the variance explained by those regression equations are anywhere from ninety-eight, ninety-seven to ninety-eight percent. Ninety-eight percent of the variance in class sizes are explained by succeeding class sizes. Now births, it's a little bit dicier, because, you know, if we were to require, okay, say, for example, if there were a law that says all households with kindergarten-aged children must go to school, then that rate and that, that amount of variance it explains would be a lot better. But again, we've seen, I've seen in doing this, you know, some fluctuations in the numbers of predicted kindergarteners and the number of births that occurred. As you can see, the lines that I produce for each of those attendance areas are not perfect. Some lines are above, some lines are right on. But again, for prediction purposes, that's the best that we have. I've seen, and I've, I've seen other studies done where they take, oh, other state secondary data like driver's licenses and changes and registration tags and looking at occupancy permits and, and those kinds of things. But again, those are general, that's general information that, that may be useful to explain some of these things, but for prediction purposes, they're not as accurate. So, I do like, I do like what
Dr. Bailey?
And Mr. Vermei? I got that right. Suggested we do over the summer. We had some, we had an interesting meeting, looking at that data and looking at the data, the differences between attendance areas. And there was one request that came out of the meeting that we'd take a look at cohort survival ratios over a number of years and compare those, you know, which may provide some, some more interesting information that, that can explain enrollments and projection.
Well, thank you, I really appreciate all the work you've done over the years to help us predict and these enrollments. And every year it gets better with all the data that we have in the past, so thank you. Always nice to see you.
Ms. Bernardi, I do, I do remember doing a presentation, you were in the audience, not sitting up on the dais, so.
That's right, it was before I was on the board, that's how long it's been, so.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Coffrin, for your detailed reporting and your sense of humor tonight.
Okay, okay.
And I agree with Jennifer, it was shocking just to see the difference. But I believe your track record with these predictions have been pretty spot-on for us, so I don't think that you would lead us astray. So thank you again for all of your time and effort and your continued partnership with the district.
And again, I'm looking forward to seeing what happens in two thousand and twenty-four, because that puts us, once again, three years out from a rebound from COVID. We'll see what happens with the, with the enrollments, so that'd be interesting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So moving on to seven point zero-two, our boundary update.
Mr., what's his new name?
Dr. Butler.
Well, you are correct, he will never, he will never live it down.
You're dead. Dr. Butler, I have ordered your nameplate to be changed already, so.
You know, occasionally my mom watches these, so she's not going to be happy when she hears that part, I will say. So, I'm happy to do two things. The enrollment report will be the next piece that we want to have, but regarding our boundary adjustment updates for the board and for our community, really wanted to provide some narrative information, and then I will pass off to Dr. Ulrich. But since conversations began years ago about adjusting boundaries, we've been committed to taking a data-driven approach. One of our primary goals with updating boundaries has been to alleviate current and projected overcrowding. Over the past ten years, total student enrollment in the Kirkwood schools has increased, and most recently, up until this school year, had shown a modest growth, as Dr. Coffrin said, roughly one percent in the last projections. However, with this most recent report that you all saw, enrollment projections indicate an unexpected decline due to lowering birth rates. As fewer students are born in the district, the number of students enrolling in Kirkwood schools is also predicted to decrease. And with this new data, as we took Dr. Coffrin's projections and looked at those projections out to the twenty-eight, twenty-nine school year and compared those to the previous numbers that we had regarding utilization and capacity in each of our elementary and middle school buildings, it does look like that with this new data, we would achieve one of the main priorities that was identified not only by our boundary adjustment committee, but has been supported by our public, in that our buildings will be at or around that eighty-five percent utilization at the elementary, middle school, and high school level, based on these projections with no boundary modifications in the twenty-eight, twenty-nine school year. And so with that summary, I want to turn it over to Dr. Ulrich.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bailey. I do want to thank you once again, every opportunity that I have, for your work on this over the past three years, quite literally, that the boundary committee was started as a result of Prop S not passing in the summer of two thousand and twenty with everything else going on. And so I appreciate that greatly. I also want to thank the Board of Education for their attention to this matter, to the due diligence of this, the seriousness that the board has taken, because anytime you talk about changing elementary boundaries in particular, and we have found in Kirkwood specifically, there's a lot of motion surrounding it. And it is something we have not done in fifty years. And, and I will tell you that based on our published timeline, we would, if we had, would have stuck to this timeline, if we had, would not have listened to our, our families and our community members, and we had not been given due deliberation to, to this process, we may have made a decision somewhat prematurely. And I say that in the face of this new data, this, that we have from Dr. Coffrin. And so based on that, I want to make sure that I say that throughout this process, I should say that we, we committed to four things from, from every opportunity that we've had to reinforce it. We committed to a process. We committed to clear transparency in that process. We communicated, or we committed to communication and gathering feedback. And as Dr. Bailey said a few moments ago, we committed to looking at the data. We have new information. Again, I want to thank the Board of Education for their due diligence in, in pausing and saying, let's wait till we get this new information. I will tell you, Ms. Pangborn, I was just as surprised as everybody else to see this. But as Ms. Ms. Shern indicated, Dr. Coffrin does have a trusted track record with the district and with our community in terms of the projections. And so that being said, and understanding and recognizing, again, as Dr. Bailey did a deep dive into this presentation and to the numbers, we, without changing our elementary boundaries, we will, as the projections show, we would be at or around eighty-five percent utilization in all five of our elementary schools without moving any elementary boundaries. And so, that being said, I am recommending that we do not adjust our elementary boundaries in the, for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. A couple of things that I want to say about that. We will follow where the data takes us. And so I want to make sure that I say to everybody in the public that, that I trust that this board, if we learn new and different information, specifically if our projections go and, and turn around and start back in that direction, certainly this board, I would expect that they would want me to bring back and look at what our utilization in our elementary schools would be like. So, along with that recommendation, and I, I will say that, you know, based on this conversation, a communication, a special communication will go to our community, specifically with this information based on the new demographic projections that we have. There are a couple of things that have emerged that, in terms of the priorities that we heard from our families. One of the things that we made a commitment and emerged after Prop S failed, we made the commitment to look at boundaries regardless of whether Prop R passed, again, thankfully it did. But we did make that commitment, and as part of that commitment, one of the things that we have consistently heard is that we, if we could, please, as part of this process, quote-unquote, fix the Tillman split. And I am, I will tell the board that while we do not have numbers to present to you, you heard Dr. Coffrin's numbers in terms of the projections, but we don't have a spreadsheet to hand to you this evening. But we will continue to investigate the Tillman split for even as soon as the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And so, I know this is new information, it's different information. But again, before I turn it over to you, Ms. Shern, for, for any questions and the impacts that this might have, I want to say thank you again to the Board of Education. All of you, at some point or another, have put in hours, quite literally, meeting with our public, making commitments to our public, like I said, through committing to a process, to committing to transparency, a communication, and following where the data takes us. And after what we have learned and what the data is telling us this evening one more time, I will say, I am recommending that we do not adjust our elementary boundaries for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Ms. Shern?
Thank you, Dr. Ulrich. I will start to my right with Ms. Bernardi.
Thank you, Ms. Shern. I really appreciate the district administration listening to the voices who ask that we wait until we hear the results of this enrollment study. The enrollment report presented this evening really predicts things in a different way. And as you said, we will be at our capacity for the next five years, and so we can remain with the boundaries. And I think this information is so relevant that we make these data-driven decisions, and these best predictors are the births and the student count. So thank you, I appreciate all your work and all the people on the boundary committee. And I, I would suggest in the future that every year after our enrollment report, we look and check capacity again, as you have done, because it's a good time when we have all our counts in. And thank, thank you very much for listening to the community as well.
Thank you, Mr. Caffey.
Yeah, just a real quick thank you for your leadership with Dr. Ulrich on this process. I'm glad that we did wait for the data. Just a quick thank you for your commitment to the overall process.
Ms. Andrews.
Dr. Bailey slash Butler, I'd also like to thank you. You have, you know, throughout this whole process, you have done a great job of leading the way. And, you know, a lot of good has come out of this. We've had the opportunity to hear a lot from community members, and I just appreciate being, that you all took the time to get this data and, and, you know, I just appreciate being a, that you all took the time to get this data and then, you know, pivot and change. Thank you.
Mr. Boyko?
Uh, I'll just be curious, you know, when, when we do have, um, a better idea of what we can do, if anything, at the middle school level in terms of both the Tillman split and also the pain point of, as you pointed out, um, Nifer, um, the, the neighborhood's right around Nifer, not being sent to Nifer. Uh, if there's anything we can do to address those points, um, we should be open to reassuring the parents that, you know, just because that pain has existed for 50 years, doesn't mean we're satisfied with living with it. Thanks.
Ms. Pangborn?
Uh, just so I'm clear, we're not voting on any of this. You're making a recommendation and it's just moving forward.
That's correct because it is the status quo. There would not be a vote one way or the other.
Okay. Um, well, I wish, I wish we had a little bit more time to sit with that honestly, um, than getting that information tonight. But, um, I, I do also believe that it would be helpful if we did have more guidance on how we could address the Tillman split before saying we're just keeping with the status quo at this point. But, um, I look forward to hearing those recommendations later. Um, we also heard a lot from our community members. One of them was walkability at all of the elementary and middle schools that Mr. Boyko mentioned. Um, and again, just again, I feel that information is now just out there and we're not doing anything with it. So it's just, again, we went through this great process. We had all of this input. I'm really glad that we're looking at data to make decisions. Um, but the boundary adjustments and that conversation takes years. So I don't know how fast we can pivot in the future if we see a change again. And so it just concerns me that we're going to be in this ebb and flow constantly in a roller coaster with our community. That concerns me. So.
Uh, Ms. Maltika?
Couple of questions for you. Um, according to, and first of all, thank you for all you've done. And I agree that I'm really glad we have waited, have, we've taken in all the information we could get. Um, what, what I'm hearing is that the decline in utilization at the elementary schools, specifically Kaiser and North Glendale, we're not going to see a real improvement there for five more years till the 2829 school year.
Uh, for Kaiser specifically, yes. For Glendale, that is going to be more flat than anything else. Robinson is the other one that we would see a bit of a, more of a, a steeper decline. But for Glendale, the, the projection is that it's going to remain relatively stable in terms of that enrollment piece. But for Kaiser and Robinson in particular, um, and, and of those two, Kaiser is more on the year four, year five end of that projection. Correct?
Okay. So for the next five years, it's going to be overcrowded as it is?
I can say for the next five years, just based on current enrollment, projected kindergarten, that it would be above that 85% for, yes, five.
Okay. And then I really want us to, to look at, um, the middle schools. And we, as a district, as a board, as a community, made a commitment that we would end the Tillman split. And so if, if we looked at having Tillman, Kaiser and Westchester all at North and North Glendale and Robinson at Nifer, what are, what would be the building utilization rates for that?
So are you speaking of specifically if we just change the enrollment now versus the projected, just that I'm aware of the?
Right.
So based on those enrollment changes, if we did that now, some of the, um, maps that we showed in the last scenario had a scenario like that, except it was Tillman at Nifer and those percentages were anywhere from, um, the one building that had three elementary schools were anywhere from an 88 to a 92 on those capacity pieces. Um, the north capacity is a little bit higher than Nifer, 877 to 911. So it's about a 40 student difference in terms of capacity, but the percentages would be roughly in those ranges, I would say, um, based on today, like students enrolled today.
So when we had three middle schools at Nifer, I believe the building utilization rate was about 92% at Nifer.
On one of the maps with, with adjustments, correct? With, and then on another map with some of the adjustments, it was, I think, 87 or 88%.
And the utilization rate at North was in the 50s.
Correct.
So given that North is a bigger building, it would be, it would not be as drastic a change.
It wouldn't be an exact flip. Basically, it wouldn't be going there, but it wouldn't be, uh, a 15%, like it wouldn't be a 10 or 15% difference between that as well. So I'd say probably in that high 80s is where that would be around.
At North and in the 60s at Nifer.
Yes.
Okay. I, I, and I'm not speaking for anybody else here, but that is to me much more palatable for a number of reasons. Um, North is bigger. There's more room. It has more room for expansion. We would also be able to offer to any of the Tillman families that wanted it to waiver into Nifer. So that would bring the number down a bit. And as we see in five years, when the Kaiser enrollment drops, as is currently projected, um, that would help balance it even more. And I'm, I'm saying all of this because I feel so strongly that we must honor our commitment to Tillman. And we have to find a way to do that. And that's something we can't just say, oh, we'll see if we can do this for the 2425 school year. We have promised them that starting next school year, there would not be a Tillman split. And I for one cannot go back on that. And we have to figure that out and we have to figure it out soon.
Thank you. Mr. Caffey?
Yeah. So I just, I want to be careful about respectfully, just we statements. Um, we had a process as part of looking at the boundary reconfiguration. That was going to be something that we looked to, to reconcile. And I hope that we still do. I, I really do hope that we still look at it. But a promise and a commitment, I, I don't know if I'm comfortable with, with, with saying that. So I respectfully hope that we still look at it. Certainly. Being committed to it and promising is, is different. So, um, we're still in a process too. So I want to bring that up as well. This new data gives us more information and we're still committed to the process in the context of what, um, Dr. Ulrich, um, spoke about the new direction, right? But, um, I just want to be careful about promises and commitments. So.
Ms. Andrews?
Um, I, I think that, you know, when we're looking at, at the Tillman split and that kind of thing, um, I would challenge you guys to also think, is there anything else that can be done, um, that would ease that? I know I talked to a variety of parents that, um, you know, suggest, some of the suggestions from these, um, meetings were, you know, could you have an open enrollment at Tillman where, um, essentially pair, um, families could kind of choose their middle school? Um, there, there were other suggestions that I heard like, um, I forget all of them, but if, if we could kind of look at that too, you know, just other ways. I know the one that I had forgotten, um, just grouping Tillman kids together at middle school. One, um, mom that I talked to was like, you know, it wouldn't have been such a big deal if, if my kids could have been on the same team with, with other Tillman kids or, or that kind of thing. Because I think that the point is, is that there are kids that have struggled with, struggle with, with the split. And so, um, you know, just looking at all the different ways. And I guess one more thing is what I would just ask is Dr. Ulrich and your team to just come to us with what you think is the best decision for all students.
Ms. Bernardi?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I, I appreciate this, Dr. Bailey. And looking at originally was the elementary boundaries. So I think it is new information and I look forward to some solutions for the middle school, um, resource. Um, and what we'll do about waivers or something to, to assist and ease the process. But I, I personally don't expect an answer tonight. So I would like to give you and Dr. Ulrich some time since it is new information for us all.
So again, yes, thank you, Dr. Bailey. Um, I just asked that you and your team, Dr. Ulrich, do your due diligence, um, to ensure that whatever decision the district lands on is student-centered, um, and data-driven. So thank you.
And, uh, just to add at the, the last, it's just more of a statement that I have been nothing but extremely impressed with the engagement that our community has had in this process, with the commitment that the community has had to, uh, showing up, providing feedback, engaging in the process and the great ideas that are generated from that. Um, and so if somebody were to ask like, gosh, would we be starting from fresh if we have to look at this again? I think we had a great opportunity to identify priority areas from our community. Um, and just being able to talk to parents and to see the passion they have for our Kirkwood schools, to see the care they have for, for our Kirkwood schools. Um, I've said it almost every time we've presented that what we hear and over and over and over again is that people love the school they're at. They passionately love the school. Um, and we saw a community come together just last week at Tillman and, and, uh, an entire district support that community as well. So I just want to, you know, compliment our Kirkwood community, um, on, on the engagement and the process and being committed to, um, working with us on, on looking at these enrollments, looking at the boundaries and providing their honest feedback throughout all of this. Um, it really has been very, um, impressive.
Thanks again. Um, seven point zero three, official enrollment report.
Dr. Butler is here to present that. And so we'll go through, um, so, uh, just rolling through with the official enrollment report. Just as a reminder for our enrollment report, this is taken on the last Wednesday of September. And so this may have changed after that day, um, with it. But that last Wednesday in September is the official enrollment number. So as in past years, we give the, some enrollment trends to summarize everything upfront. Um, you will see a couple of differences when it comes to how we describe things. So a resident for Kirkwood resident enrollment is essentially everybody who is not at the moment of, of student who participates in the VIC program. So resident enrollment would include, um, anybody who is considered resident with us that has decreased by 33 students since last school year. Non-resident enrollment, which at this point, we no longer have any Riverview Gardens, uh, or normally transfers. So we just have students in the VIC program, uh, that has decreased every year. And I'll talk a little bit more about that, uh, a little bit later. Over the last 10 years, so if we just went back 10 years, including this year, enrollment has increased by 242 students. But you can see the second to last bullet point since the 2012, 13 school year, we have seen a 556 student increase, um, which is comparable to an elementary building. Um, the total enrollment decreased by 39 students since last school year. So a lot of different numbers in there, um, with everything, but essentially we saw a decrease in the trend. You can still see the trend line is aiming up. This is total student population. Uh, it does include any virtual and mocap students. So for your, for the board's benefit, a student could be 100% enrolled in a virtual course and they're still considered a Kirkwood student. So just because they're not physically in our building, we still count them through our enrollment piece. And you can see that enrollment trend, um, is up there. We did decrease by that 39 student number. The resident enrollment has continued to grow, except for this past year, we did show that slight decline, but you can see that in the previous years were up. Um, since the 2014, 2015 school year, resident enrollment has grown, um, by several. Just as a breakdown, there was a time when resident enrollment did not comprise this large of a percentage, but that percentage will continue to grow every year for the next 12 years. Um, and, and I say that because the, the VIC program is closed out. So we will not be taking any new students per VIC, not per Kirkwood. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. But resident enrollment makes up 99.3%, non-resident point seven. We did see an increase in our ELL population to 82 students. We have quite a few newcomers as well. So a newcomer is somebody who's less than two years in the United States, who doesn't have much English. And we have quite a few, um, students that have come to us from various countries. Um, we're actually looking at a couple of devices to do some translations. We have, um, Arabic, Swahili, Pashto, Creole, uh, that's a new one that's come in. So quite a few students. And hopefully at the Mini Cultures One Kirkwood event, you'll get to see all those represented. Um, our students with IEP population is at 13.4. Uh, students in the gifted program, 10.1%. And then we did see, if you guys remember, last year, we saw a bit of a decline in the number of students who qualified under free reduced lunch. Part of that was because coming out of COVID, everyone got free lunch. And, and we had quite a few families that probably qualified, but didn't apply. So we made a concerted effort, working with our finance department and our social workers especially, to reach out to families. And so that is a bit up again this year to 8.7% free reduced. This is just a breakdown for ethnic piece. I will say, um, that in particular, our black student population is down. Last year, that percentage started with a nine and that's down to 8.8. Uh, the fastest growing percentage, uh, group is our, um, multi-racial students. And we do have, uh, growth in Hispanic students as well. You guys saw the different enrollment numbers that show up with Dr. Cawfran's projections. I do want to point out that any slide that you see where it says projected, that's that mid-series, the projection, so kind of that weighted average. Uh, you can look across and you can see the numbers according to building by going up and down, and then by grade level by going left to right. Um, and you can just see trend wise that, that kindergarten enrollment compared to the others is slightly lower, um, but that our elementary enrollment came in at 2747. Last year, we were at 2773, so a decrease there. Um, and we're projected at 2726, so a slight uptick based on that projection, uh, but within that, that percentage area of, of mean. The largest kindergarten group is at Westchester, 111, and they do have the largest overall class at 127 third grade, uh, students. Secondary enrollment, um, both middle schools, you can see Nifer and North. North does have quite a large sixth grade class in comparison to other grade levels. And then high school at 1742 for a total of 3,057. Um, you can see the projection was around 3030, so not that far off. But you can see that there is a decrease from secondary enrollment last school year to this current school year. Each of these next slides, I'm not going to go too in-depth. You can look at it, but it basically gives you a grade level breakdown. What percentage of the building that grade level comprises gives you a breakdown of other factors. The R is resident and our non-resident. Um, ELL, self-explanatory, students with IEPs, G is gifted, um, students who qualify for gifted and then free reduced lunch. And then you can see a breakdown, race, ethnicity for each building. So Kirkwood High School, Nifer Middle School, you can see that we, um, have a larger percentage in terms of our black African-American population than when we show North. But that other numbers are fairly comparable. You can see North Kirkwood Middle, number of ELL students is slightly down there. And you'll also see a trend with non-resident students that's decreasing as we go through the secondary schools. At our elementary schools, there is one extra grade level when it comes to that chart. So there's a little bit of a free reduced lunch dangler down there. That's only because there wasn't enough room to make it visible at the top row. Um, but at our elementary levels, you can see that our non-resident population, uh, also known as students who participate in the VIC program, will be down. Uh, there are 38 students total in the program. 30 of those are at the secondary level. Um, we do have an increase at the elementary level as well in our ELL population. Um, and you will see some variances between buildings with students with IEPs as well. So Kaiser, North Glendale, interestingly enough, we've got enrollments in several buildings that are pretty close, uh, between Kaiser, Glendale and Westchester. Um, and then Tillman and, and Robinson have close enrollments as well. Robinson at 478. This is our building, um, currently the only building that qualifies for Title I. And you can see in terms of the free reduced lunch, uh, percentage, that is the highest in the district, 16%. Tillman, and then you, there was a slight uptick. Uh, last year Tillman was in the 480s with enrollment, so 493 this school year. And then Westchester at 595. We do like to show K E C C just so that we can get a little bit of predictions. And just as a reminder, K E C C is required by law to provide early childhood special education. So we are able to get a count of students with IEPs. It looks a little bit higher than what we have percentage-wise in some other buildings because of that state requirement. Um, but roughly 25% of the population Um, but roughly twenty-five percent of the population at K E C C has an IEP. They currently have three hundred and seven students. So the VIC program, at one point, at the height for Kirkwood, uh, we had four hundred and eighty students that were enrolled in the VIC program. That number is currently at thirty-eight. Um, if you may or may not be aware, the VIC program itself stopped accepting new students this current school year. So this was the last year for a new student, uh, to be enrolled. Next school year, no new students, even if they are a sibling of a current student, will be enrolled. Another change that I found out is that in the past, if a student lived in the Kirkwood School District and they moved to our zone in St. Louis City, we could still have them attend Kirkwood through the VIC program. That's called an ex-resident. That will no longer be available to any of our students as well. Um, basically on the, um, the lawsuit being, winding down with everything. This current school year, we were only allocated one slot. Across the county, there were only a hundred and fifty slots allocated and we received one. I will say that we enrolled four students though, because we had, uh, a set of twins and an ex-resident go along with the one that we were allocated. So, um, we did have more than what we were allocated. Just as a reminder, all students in the VIC program can remain until graduation. So we don't have any kindergartners, but we do have one first grader, and that first grader will be with us through twelfth grade, or could be with us through twelfth grade. Um, currently eighty-four percent of our VIC students are, our students in the VIC program are middle of school or high school. So of the thirty-eight students, thirty are sitting at middle school or high school. And of that, fifty-five percent are either junior or senior. So we're going to continue to see large numbers of, of that particular group graduate out. I will say as well that that has presented some transportation challenges because what used to be entire busloads of students on shorter routes has now turned, um, to some vans or some taxis, or doubled up bus routes because of the need to consolidate routes for everything. So. You can see the decrease there of, of, uh, enrollment going down. It's, uh, almost coincides with our resident enrollment increases, um, not by planning, but just by the way the numbers came out. But again, this is not a Kirkwood choice. This is, the VIC program is closing out for every school district that participates. We do like to report the non-resident employee enrollment for the, for the board to review as well. And you can see a breakdown across each of the buildings. This year, we have a hundred and seventy-seven total non-resident employee children. So we could have more employee children attending schools, but they might be residents of Kirkwood School District. These are non-resident employee, um, children that come to the Kirkwood School District. They do receive services, um, from us and from Special School District, uh, as well as any other gifted five oh four, whatever support they need. Then we start looking a little bit at some of those enrollment comparisons. And if you are like me and you spend hours looking at the reports that Dr. Cawfrin gets, or if you just want to look at a quick summary, um, essentially for these projections, these are based on the straight resident enrollment, meaning these do not include non-resident employee children. Um, and you can see that the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three actual enrollment last school year, five ninety-four at Kaiser. This current school year of residents who live in Kirkwood, five sixty-six. And you can see that that mid-series projection for this cur, school year, which was not based on the report you just received, but last year's report. So if we're, these, all these projections are from the previous report. Um, you can see that the enrollment is down from, based on the previous projection. Um, you can see that at Glendale as well. You can see that at Robinson. Uh, Tillman, you can see what Dr. Cawfrin was talking about is actually higher than what was projected based on that report. Westchester, a little bit below. Both Nifer and North are not that far off from those projections. Um, and the Kirkwood High School is only about twenty kids off, uh, out of seventeen hundred, uh, from that projection. So as a district, the actual enrollment of resident live in Kirkwood students is fifty-five ninety-three, and the projection showed fifty-six ninety, um, which is about eighty to ninety students off, um, within that one to two percent variance as Dr. Cawfrin mentioned there. We do include transfer data. This is something we started including last school year as well. And you can see that when it comes to transfer data, I want to make sure to state the dates. So this is anything after, um, the school year ended. And it, so it could be that somebody was with us all of last school year and transferred out, quote unquote, the very next day. So this is if they were with us last year and did not come back to us this current school year. You can see two hundred and forty-five total transfer out. Just as a reminder, the in-state public is typically because somebody moved, or in some cases, it's a non-resident employee child that just goes to their resident school. Out-of-state public is almost always that somebody moved. In-state private, uh, doesn't necessarily have to be a local private school, but it is an in-state private school. Out-of-state private, and then in-state homeschool. If you remember, one year around COVID, we had like ninety-five, and that's trended back down to the typical numbers for us, which are usually around five-ish. Uh, we do have transfer-in data, and then you can see the difference between each of those. So between transfers out and transfers in for in-state public, we actually gained twelve students. Uh, gained one student for out-of-state public, transfer-in, transfer-out. The biggest loss area was the in-state private. When it comes to transfer-out, transfer-in, we had a minus forty-three on that. Um, plus thirteen on out-of-state private. So when people are in a private school out-of-state and they move to Kirkwood, they tend to enroll in Kirkwood, not in another private school. And then in-state homeschool, we actually gained quite a few, um, homeschool students back into the Kirkwood School District. So while we had two hundred and forty-five transfer out, two hundred and thirty-four transferred in. So it was a net difference of minus eleven overall, just with transfers. Just to give a little bit deeper snapshot, when we look at when students are transferring, um, what we look at is what grade did somebody finish when they transferred, um, either in or out? And you can see that we have very few students, um, or actually this past school year, zero students that tr, that did kindergarten with Kirkwood and then transferred out to a private school. Um, but we did gain eleven students who did kindergarten somewhere else and then came to a Kirkwood School District. Part of that, um, sometimes is that some private schools don't, uh, will allow students to start before the start date that we're required to stick by with the state. Um, or in other cases, they may have just been in a different school setting for a variety of reasons. Um, first grade, you can see those numbers. The biggest, uh, gap, there, we're usually within two or three outside of that kindergarten number, but the biggest gap, without much surprise, is after students finish eighth grade with us, we did see fifty-eight students transfer to a private high school. Um, and again, these are private in-school. Um, and so we did gain, however, after eighth grade, fourteen students to Kirkwood High School. Um, but for the most part, outside of that eighth grade transfer, it's plus or minus two or three either way. That's just a graphical representation of our in-school, private school, in-state, private school, transfer-out numbers. You can see we're commensurate, um, with previous years and actually a little bit lower than the previous three years. And then just total transfer-out data, commensurate with last year, and, uh, actually one of the lower numbers in previous years as well. And again, that twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one data really is, uh, indicative of COVID. Many, um, there were different schools that started back in person at different times. So that year's kind of the aberration, but the other years, um, were fairly close. And, um, welcome any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey. I'm gonna start to my left. No to Ms. Motique, Ms. Pangborn.
Um, no, Dr. Bailey, I appreciate this. And I know we've requested some of this transfer data in the past. So I think it's really good to look at it when we have the official enrollment numbers, because we haven't always had this. So it's really helpful. Um, can you reiterate slides twenty-four and twenty-five, what they are saying for us?
Yes, except I don't know which number it is on the screen. So you tell me where to stop.
It's the, the one after this? Oh, go, that one in the following bar chart.
Sure. So what this one-
Can you reiterate that? Because we've heard the opposite of what this is showing, and I just think this is important.
So what this slide would show is that at the end of the twenty-three, twenty, at the end of the twenty-three school year, so we ended May twenty-fifth, I can't remember the exact date. The next day, between the next day and essentially September thirtieth, we had one hundred and thirteen students that left the Kirkwood School District to enroll in an in-state private school. Um, other than the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, and the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, it was one of the lower numbers, but it's not that far off from the average. So, uh, a hundred and thirteen students left a Kirkwood school to enroll in a private school in-state. And then in the, the next slide, the total transfers out, so between, again, the end of last school year and the beginning of this school year through September thirtieth, because that's our official enrollment date, um, two hundred and forty-five students total transferred out. And that would include out-of-state, uh, public, in-state public, out-of-state, and in-state private, and transfer to homeschool. So that's what those two slides show.
Perfect. And I appreciate that, because I, I know we've had discussions in the past in trying to understand why some families may be leaving, but this, what this shows is that there's not, it's not hugely different, um, from previous years. If anything, it's actually less. So, I appreciate that.
True.
Thank you.
Mr. Boyko.
No, I disagree with everything, uh, Ms. Pangborn said. That those two slides definitely, um, debunk a misconception that some members of the public have about, uh, families wanting to pull their kids from Kirkwood schools. So I appreciate it.
You said disagree. That's what I'm like, what?
I disagree with myself. I agree with Ms. Pangborn. Thank you.
Just let Dr. Butler know and he'll take care of that.
Um, Ms. Andrews.
Um, just thank you for adding this component to.
Oh, that's it. Okay. Okay. Mister, uh, Kathy, is that it?
Yeah, okay.
Mister Kathy.
So this question is not to scrutinize any math, but just to make sure I understand the way, like, your dataset and Dr. Cawfrin's might, might mirror each other. So his, you know, in his findings, there was an eighty-student decline year over year.
Yes.
Your trend showed thirty-nine.
So, yeah, I can explain. So the important thing to remember with Dr. Cawfrin's study is that he literally imagined taking a cookie cutter shaped like our district and having every student that goes here plotted on a map. And when he takes that cookie cutter and cuts out the Kirkwood, it's only students who are living in a residence in the Kirkwood School District. So some of our enrollment numbers would include non-resident staff children. Some of our enrollment numbers would include students who are in the VIC program. And it's a number that has grown, uh, a lot over the last several years due to a variety of reasons. But a student who may be considered a resident of Kirkwood, but who has become homeless for whatever reason, and is now staying with aunt or grandma, or in a shelter or hotel, those students aren't categorized in his cookie cutter of, and I shouldn't say cookie cutter like it's something, but basically not categorized in his blocking of that census data. So there's always a slight difference due to that, because he's literally saying, you put your head down at night, every night in Kirkwood versus a variety of other situations that were required to enroll students based on.
So just so I understand, because, and I won't belabor this too much, but he did have a map which showed plots of people outside of the district. So.
Right. And that's when he was saying, if you remember, he said on that map, he doesn't include, he only includes the students that are within the bound, bound.
Got it.
But it, it's, it's, it's a valid question and can be confusing, because when we're calling somebody a resident, but we're talking about, so resident means two different things between these enrollment projections and enrollment reports. So resident here is either you are, uh, you are a Kirkwood resident, or you've meet some other residency requirement, or you're a student who participates in the VIC program. It's only one of those two. Versus what Dr. Cawfrin's saying is resident means you physically live in the Kirkwood School District. And again, there could be a variety of reasons why somebody is not. It could be loss of housing, could be that they are a non-resident student employee, lots of different pieces, but.
So his eighty, eighty-student decline is of students that reside within.
Yes.
And, uh, the one you presented is meeting the residency requirement that the district defines.
Correct. Yeah.
Got it. Yep. Thank you.
Ms. Bernardi.
Oh, thanks, Dr. Bailey. Um, to the point about the numbers and correlating the numbers, so a loss of eighty students overall, but a loss of seventy-four K through five. So that's what he presented. So I think when we get our enrollment trends, I think that's where we, we get a little confused. So I just had a request or suggestion. At the beginning, when you show that chart of the resident enrollment, I know in the budget book, it's separated out by, um, elementary, middle, and high school. And then you can see, um, it, I hate to always compliment Mr. Romeu over there, but it's a, it's a really good, uh, pictorial representation, I think, for the board to see. Um, and I think that that might help us here in inserting that. And, and then also, um, those, um, those employee resident children, there's a hundred and seventy-seven on slide twenty, and how they're dispersed, because those are students' space available. And space is available, so you do have some leeway to place those students. So I think that's very important that we, um, we also, uh, communicate that.
Yeah, I, I will say regarding the, the non-resident employee children, we have committed to, um, ensuring that adding any of those students at a specific school does not create the need to create a new section. Meaning if there are four, uh, fourth grade sections at, at Tillman, we are not going to add a student to create section number five. But, um, you're correct. We do show that, that breakdown by building for the non-resident employee. And thank you for the suggestion regarding this particular, um, chart.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey, for all your work on this. Alright. Um, eight point zero one, our policy review of, so this is to the board. The following, um, policies are presented for a first reading only. Please review over the next several weeks and submit any questions or concerns to Ms. Bernardi, our policy committee representative. Um, please note that a majority of these policies are mandatory per SB six eight one and HB one five five two. Policies will then be brought back for a second reading and approval at our November twentieth meeting. Board, if you have any questions prior to the November meeting, please reach out to Ms. Bernardi. Alright. Nine point zero one, future events, um, November third through fourth. I think all of us are going. The entire board will be attending the MSBA, you're not? Annual conference? Oh, that's okay. Most of us. Um, in Kansas City. November sixth, a board work session at six thirty PM, um, at Nifer Middle School Library. November seventh, Staff Development Day, there's no school. November eighth, um, Calendar Committee Meeting. November twentieth, Board Business Meeting at six thirty PM, back here at Robinson. Um, November twenty-second, the Chili Bowl, um, no school for students. I think I'm a judge. Come righty. Um, and then November twenty-third through the twenty-fourth is our Thanksgiving break. All district offices will be closed. Nine point zero two, Board Candidacy Filing, um, this is just information that the Kirkwood Board of Education Candidate Filing Window runs December fifth through the twenty-sixth. Kirkwood residents may file as candidates for the Kirkwood School District Board of Education from Tuesday, December fifth at eight AM, until Tuesday, December twenty-sixth at five PM. Election Day is April second, twenty twenty-four. Kirkwood residents may file their candidacy at the St. Louis County Election Authority Office, located at seven twenty-five Northwest Plaza Drive in St. Anne. No filing will take place at the District Administrative Office. When filing, the applicant will complete a written declaration of candidacy interested. Um, candidates may pick up an information packet from Kirkwood's Administrative Office, located at ten ninety-nine Milwaukee Street. Candidates must be citizens of the United States, residents of the Kirkwood School District for a minimum of one year, residents of Missouri for at least one year preceding the election, and at least twenty-four years of age. Two director positions on the Kirkwood School Board will be decided on the April second ballot for three-year terms. The two board members whose term expires in twenty twenty-four are Board Director Jean Marie Andrews and Board Director Angie Bernardi. For more information, please contact the Kirkwood Superintendent's Office at three one four two one three sixty-one hundred. And at this time, we will enter back into, um, closed session. This meeting is adj, I need a motion and a second to return to closed session.
Does that move?
Second.
Alright, roll call. Vote. Ms.?
Yes.
Bernardi. Yes. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming.